Okay, it's time. I'll call to order the Sparks City Council meeting of I'm on the wrong one. July 13th with a roll call, please.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Mbybi.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Krutz.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the open ceremonies. We do not have the indication speaker today, but pledge allegiance. Ed, would you lead us in that, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance.
And to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before I move your public comment, I'll have Lisa, would you read her opening statement, please?
I certainly will, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, and thank you for joining us. Due to the social distancing requirements enacted in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Sparks City Council meetings will be hosted in this virtual setting until further notice. The safety of Sparks residents, employees, and elected officials are important to us, and we appreciate your patience as we journey through this virtual meeting together. The City of Sparks uses Zoom, a third-party app for its virtual meetings, and does not control its technical specifications or requirements. Your ability to participate in public comment during this meeting may be impacted by factors like the type of device that you use, the strength of your internet or cellular signal, and the company that provides your internet or cellular service. The City of Sparks is not responsible if you are not able to participate in a meeting through Zoom due to any of these factors. For those watching and listening from home, general public comment will be announced for items four and 12.1. If you wish to speak during general public comment, you will need to call in using the phone number or join via the meeting link provided on the city council agenda. Public comment will not be permitted on social media outlets. Public comment will also be open for public hearing items 10.1 and 10.2. All participants will be muted upon entry to the meeting. If you would like to speak during public comment items, press star nine from your telephone to raise your hand, or raise your hand from your computer or tablet when prompted. You will be called upon to speak one at a time by the name or the telephone number you are calling from. Please be listening for the clerk to read off your name or telephone number. No video callers will be admitted to the meeting. When you are called on to speak for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will have three minutes. Please remember, any comments or questions cannot be addressed or answered by the council if the topics have not been agendized. Any person who disrupts the meeting to the extent that it is disorderly conduct will be removed from the meeting. Thank you again for joining us, and the meeting will now begin.
Okay, with that read, I'll open up the public comment. Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Lisa?
I do show a few hands, sir, so we will start with Lilith Barron. Lilith, your line is open, please unmute yourself, and your three minutes will begin when you say your name.
Hello, my name is Lilith Barron. Can you hear me?
We can, Lilith. Thank you, welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me. I am calling because I would like to talk about the budget that is disproportionate in community development versus policing. And I would like to know how you're going to fix the disproportionate availability for mental health services to discourage events like what happened to Makai Lee and Kenny Stafford from happening in your town. The police in your town have been harassing and bragging about killing members of your community. Many of them have killed more than one time, and I'm very confused as to why they still have jobs. Eric DeJesus still has a job. Shane Minnick is on paid retirement. These men killed and harassed the family members of these people, and your community would like answers, and we would like justice for Makai Lee and for Kenny Stafford and for the many community members that you have that have been killed. Over 75% of your community members that were killed by police officers were suffering a mental health crisis. The most team was not deployed, even though they were asked to be deployed. I would also like to say that some of the last words that your dispatching people heard from these people's families are, "Please don't kill him. He's sick. He needs help. Please take him somewhere that he can get help." That is the wife of Amy Stafford, whose husband was a veteran on the Iraq War and was killed by one of your officers. Makai Lee's mother said he is saying he's going to kill himself. He is mentally unstable, and he was murdered by Sparks Police Department. It took over five months to get a doctored body camera footage back, and we would like unedited body camera footage from every single officer, as well as an independent community investigation into the police report, as we do not feel we've received justice on this matter. Many members of your community are dissatisfied with your leadership, and we need you to make it right. We have families that are suffering. They were not compensated. They are now suffering their own mental health crises. There are children involved. These children should have had resources offered to them. These families should have had resources offered to them, and they were not. We are extremely displeased, and we will not go away. We are standing right now in front of Sparks City Hall. I know you are not here, but we will make sure to be here every single time you have a meeting to discuss these issues until you give us justice for these people, especially Makai Lee, who was a black man who was suffering a mental health crisis, and he was shot more than six times in New York City. The officer who shot his final two shots did the same thing for another community member. I don't think that anyone needs to be shot more than five or six times, let alone any amount of times, because it doesn't matter what somebody is doing. You're not supposed to kill anyone when you are on duty at all. Of all over 500 cases, only one cop has
Thank you, Lilith. Are you there? Okay, we'll go to the next person to speak.
It's Mr. Mayor. The next public comment will be from Doug Michler. Doug, your line is open. You will need to unmute, and please state your name for the record.
I am muted. Did I unmute?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Welcome, Doug.
Welcome, thank you. My name is Doug A. Michler. Some of you may know me. I've been around town forever. I have a PhD in American Cultural History. I taught history at the University of Nevada for the last 23 years. I've been a Chautauqua performer here in Nevada and across the nation for 25 years. And I got involved with theater. I was involved with Reno Little Theater for 12 years, nine years as the artistic director. And then I founded and became the managing artistic director of Sparks Theater, Russell's Artis Theater down on 29520th Street. We, this would, if COVID leaves us alone, we hope to open our fifth season. Well, as soon as COVID allows us to open our fifth season. We're all remodeled and ready to go. Things have been going slow, but we're still surviving, and we're determined to outlive the COVID virus, but that's not why I'm here. I'm here mainly about the liquor license. I brought this up before to the city and thought I'd just bring it up to the city council directly. We believe we are wrongly classified, or incorrectly is a better word term, incorrectly classified as a cabaret. And B, the second part of that, is because of being classified as cabaret, the fee is too high, and we would like that for the liquor license. And we would like to have that addressed if we can. For one thing, cabarets are usually defined as having orchestras, or dancing, or disco, or burlesque. Even in Sparks, it's identified as singing, dancing, and a floor show. And live theater, of course, and we're legitimate theater, which means we don't even do musicals, so we do live dramas and comedies. Hopefully, some of you have come and seen them. Compared to all other cities, compared to Reno, or I checked cities in Texas, North Carolina, Georgia, Washington DC, Washington State, Vegas, and even in California, Sparks is far higher for its liquor license for theater than any of these other communities, because even Reno does not classify Sparks as classified theater as a cabaret. In Reno, they are listed with nonprofits and fraternals. They pay $400 a year in costs. A cabaret in Sparks is $1,300. The only city close is Atlanta, which charges $1,000 for the liquor license. What I'm getting at is, we are only open 77 days a year. $1,300 is enormously high for us, and almost makes it unprofitable at all to sell wine and liquor, wine and beer. So we would like the city to look at this, to examine it, and try to put us more on the level of Reno, which is $400 versus the $1,300 in Sparks. Hopefully, we can get this as an agenda item or something. I don't know what the next step.
Thanks, Doug. Mr. Manager, would you have somebody get ahold of Mr. Michler?
Yes, sir. Will do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Doug.
All right, Mr. Mayor, our next public comment is from telephone number 775-742-7906. Your line is open. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, can you hear me? Awesome. My name is Olivia Piccarelli. I'm calling, I really want to reiterate what Lily said. She was the first public commenter. I want to know why it is protocol to invite armed officers to a mental health crisis. There is really no reason that somebody with a gun should be involved in dealing with somebody who is having a mental health crisis. We want release of the unedited body cam footage. We want these officers to be fired, and we want you to change your system so that this never happens to anybody again. So justice for Makai Lee. Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia. Is there any more public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there are additional call-in comments. The next one will be from telephone number 702-576-4692. Your line is open. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Sarah Chan. I'm commenting in response to the use of lethal force and this overly high police budget in Sparks. Many different kinds of reforms and rules have been implemented to try and prevent it from further deaths of Sparks citizens. And nothing has worked, because there's no police accountability in Sparks. Police officers can do whatever they want and get away with no repercussions, as seen in the case of Makai Lee. Makai Lee was an 18-year-old boy, whose mom feared because he was about to take his own life, and Sparks City officers murdered him in front of his mother. And now they've been released, as seen as justified for murdering a child. So we are here to call for the defunding of the police. We're here to call for accountability in all of the deaths that they have caused, and we're here to demand that they are taken out of schools and are never called in response to mental health crises. Police officers have murdered too many of your citizens, and we're counting on you to help us. You guys have, are sworn to help your citizens. We are just concerned citizens. You guys should be doing 10 times more than any of us are doing, and you guys are doing a minuscule amount in comparison. So you guys should step up and help the people who are looking to you for help, or know that you've disappointed everybody around you. Have a good day. Goodbye.
I'm sorry, ma'am. What was your name? Did she hang up?
It looks like she did hang up.
Okay. Next.
Our next public comment is from telephone number 702-275-0580. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, my name is Angelo Monroy. Today, I am calling in regards to police violence and seeking justice for said violence. I would like to echo all of the other voices in the community demanding justice for Makai Lee, and I think it's abhorrent that District Attorney Christopher Hicks would assert that the officers who shot Makai were justified in their actions, especially after there was a lack of de-escalation used in the body cam footage. What Hicks did was a slap in the face to Makai's family and to the entire Reno Sparks community. And for five months, we have waited for the brutal footage to be released, only to find out that no justice would be served. Beyond the Washoe County District Attorney's Office, there is no other mandated oversight of officer-involved shootings in Truckee Meadows. Once the DA renders a decision, the case is considered closed. It is sickening that Oscar James Hammerstone, who received the lifesaving award by Sparks PD in 2015, would open Makai's car door, allowing Officer Ryan Patterson to shoot Makai five times. But that wasn't all. Officer Eric DeJesus ordered the Medal of Valor in 2016, shot Makai two more times from the passenger side of the car. Only then was medical assistance called for. Makai Lee was having a mental health crisis. Sparks PD knew this and still did not act accordingly. They did nothing but further escalate the solution, the situation, and murder a desperate teenager. But now the time is up for Sparks and Sparks PD. Justice must be brought swiftly and in a way that is transparent and holds the proper people accountable. Officers Patterson, Hammerstone, and DeJesus must be fired and charged with the murder of Makai Lee. I believe it's wildly inappropriate for the Sparks City Council to go about the business as if none of this happened. We implore you to redirect your focus towards bringing justice, not just for Makai Lee, but for all of those murdered by Sparks PD. Since February 3, 2016, there have been 22 officer-involved shootings in the Reno Sparks-Washoe County region. A police officer has not been charged with a crime in any of the shootings. As city council members, you were elected by the City of Sparks to serve and represent the will of your citizens, and right now that means standing up to the Sparks PD and refusing to accept the DA's decision. Please reopen the case, and please show up for a community. Justice for Makai Lee. Black Lives Matter. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Angelo. Lisa, next.
The next public comment will be from Jamila Lewis. Your line is open. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jamila Lewis. That is spelled J-A-M double E-L-A-H, Lewis, L-E-W-I-S. Thank you so much for having me today. Being a resident of Nevada, born in Reno, lived in Sparks, as well as lived in southern Nevada, I've seen issues with police accountability and police brutality throughout the state. Not only was it Makai Lee and his family, but we also have Alma Chavez down in southern Nevada, who lost her son, who had mental illnesses from the same way. This is no longer going to be tolerated from Nevadans, specifically because we are done seeing our people shot and killed by the people that we pay in our state, but there's no accountability for the people. There's no resources. We're not getting free body footage, which is another thing that people need to definitely state, is we need free body cam footage that's unedited, not just body cam footage, because it can't just stop there. Also, we need to make sure that we are holding people who are mental health agents accountable and responsible for the things that are happening in our community, as well as the people who govern funding to support the people who have mental health illnesses. My whole life, my grandfather has worked with people who have mental illnesses in northern Nevada, and it is, it is disgusting. It is embarrassing to see that these kind of acts are happening in the state of Nevada, yet we don't get held, yet the officers who are doing this aren't held accountable, and the police and the people aren't relieved of that kind of pain, so that we have to suffer with it, but then everyone's getting paid more for our struggle. So based off of what's happening in our communities, it is only fair and just if we can get justice for Makai, and not only justice for him, but for his family, the people who have suffered. They need some kind of compensation. They need access to resources, to mental health services, because just stopping at accountability for police officers is not enough. To be honest, I don't think that you will ever hold them accountable, because you're all complicit in the system of policing, the system of allowing people with mental illnesses to go unheard and to let their life go unnoticed. I am disgusted by what I'm seeing today, and I hope that when you hear all of us and our pain and anger that's coming through, that you will all take a step back, look at yourselves, and think what your mother would think about this, what your kids or your grandkids in 15 years will think about what you decided here in this meeting and at this moment. Thank you so much for your time, and I hope you have a great day.
Thank you, Jamila. Next.
Mr. Mayor, the next public comment is from May Emily Walton. Your looks like not able to I apologize. I'm going to move on to the next one until I figure out what's going on with that one. So the next public comment is from 775-378-4813. Your line is open. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Erin Miller. I'm calling to speak against police brutality in the Reno Sparks area. I think what happened to Makai Lee is abhorrent and showed in a complete escalation on behalf of the police. Makai Lee was a mentally ill black boy who needed help, and what you guys did did not help. You sticked a dog on him. You shot him five, six times. That was insane. You didn't need to do that. He needed your help. And the only reason you aggressed was because you saw a black boy who was acting erratically, and you just assumed that you were in danger. And we need to, this case obviates the need to defund the police and reallocate that money to mental health resources. The conclusions of your case says that in itself. It said that this should never have happened, and it said that we should be have, we should have these resources in place to support mentally ill people. And you guys still aren't doing that. You need to reallocate your budget. You need to defund the police. There needs to be a community investigation led by civilians, not the cops, because cops investigating cops doesn't get anything done. You will always have each other's back, and we need to protect our community. We need to invest in our community, not in a private military that terrorizes people. I don't know how you sleep at night. Take care.
Thank you. Lisa?
Mr. Mayor, I have one more phone-in public comment. Before I do that, I just want to make sure that everybody is aware. I see a couple that have come back through that have already spoken during this item, that there will be additional opportunities for public comment. And I also want to make you aware that I have two emailed public comments. So the next
We'll do the emails, then go to regular business, and then come back to
Correct. The next public comment that I'm showing is from 702-542-4443. Your line is open. Please state your name for the record.
Yeah, and then they're going to They're going to start going through legislature or whatever they're doing. Hello?
Hello.
My name is Emanuela Gore. Sorry, but I'd like to say that by protecting and funding Sparks PD, you are all complicit in the murder of a child. This is a reality you must all internalize and live with. The continued lack of accountability reinforces the truth. You are not here for your black community members, and you are willing to perpetuate violence, and we will continue dying at your hands as long as you refuse to ask. Mayor, you have blood on your hands, blood that you can never wash away. Give us justice. Protect us. Defund Sparks PD. And finally, justice for Makai Lee. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you have some email you need to read, Lisa?
I do, Mr. Mayor. I have two of them. The first emailed public comment is from Anne Marie Grant. Anne Marie Grant, for the record, sister of Thomas Purdy, hogtied and asphyxiated to death by Reno PD and Washoe County Sheriff's Office. Both agencies were cleared of any wrongdoing by Sparks Police. Do we expect anything less when the three agencies rub elbows and investigate each other? Kenny Stafford was killed 7/11/2013 by Sparks Police. Kenny was an Iraqi war veteran, home on leave. Kenny experienced a PTSD crisis and was murdered by Sparks Police. Kenny was a husband, son, brother, best friend, and a father to three young little girls. His wife has been left to navigate the world without his irreplaceable support and love. Johnny Bonta was killed 10/22/2017 by three Sparks Police officers in front of his wife and teenage daughter. Johnny was named Deputy Goodwill Ambassador for Native Americans for the city of Reno. He was a sun dancer and activist, a proud member of AIM, a husband, son, uncle, brother, a father, and so much more to so many people. Monica Ritchie was killed by Sparks Police 10/13/2013 during a mental health crisis. Monica needing de-escalating instead, like so many other community members in crisis in this county, Sparks PD showed up guns blazing. They not only killed Monica, but recklessly wounded her daughter. So many more victims, not enough time to speak their names and stories. Now imagine if were your family living this nightmare. Can you step down from your imaginary safe place and do that? It's clear SPD's MO with community members in crisis is to immediately escalate the situation and kill those who need help, not a body bag. Things need to change and quickly. Adding $3 million to their budget isn't going to solve this problem. It's obvious you aren't listening to your constituents. The consequence for that will be at election time. And the second one is from Daniel Purdy. Daniel Purdy, brother of Thomas Purdy, murdered at county jail. I find it strange that up until George Floyd, the commission was willing to pay out millions of dollars to loved ones that have been murdered at the hands of your police and county jail. There has been plenty of video and audio of the same thing happening to members of your own community, and you stood by and did nothing, and now all of a sudden you want to stand up and finally be the people of justice. You're nothing but vote seekers, and should be ashamed of yourselves. If only poor people would go and vote, you'd all be out of a job. I will be in Reno, Nevada in September. I will make sure that I help feed the homeless and register people to vote. I land September 5. I welcome any commissioner to come out on Labor Day with me and feed the homeless. Let's see how much your community members really matter to you. And that is it, sir.
Okay, is there anybody else in the audience wishing to speak at this time that has not spoken?
I am not showing any additional public comment.
Okay, then we'll bring it back to the council. 5.1, approval of the agenda.
I'm going to approve Abbott.
Okay, we have a motion from Abbott. A second. Second. Second from Anderson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. 6.1, consideration of possible approval of the minutes of the special Sparks City Council meeting for June 19, 2020, and the regular Sparks City Council meeting for June 22, 2020. Any changes? Okay, looking for a motion? I've got a motion from Mr. Lawson.
A second.
And a second from Mr. Dare. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I keep saying aye. I don't even vote for this. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, seven announcements, presentations, recognition items, and special items of interest. 7.1, 7.2, and 7.3, no. 7.1 and 7.2, first of all, Neil.
Good afternoon, Mayor Smith, members of the council. For the record, Neil Krutz, your city manager, here to announce two vacancies. The first one, 7.1, is on the Sierra Arts Foundation Board of Trustees. We have one vacancy there for a one-year term that we've run through August 13 of 2021. To qualify as an applicant, you need to be a resident in the City of Sparks, and we will take applications through 5:00 PM this Friday, July 17, 2020. Item 7.2 is for our Civil Service Commission. We have a single vacancy there as well for a partial three-year term that would run through June 30 of 2023. You also need to be a resident of the city to qualify for that position. We will accept applications for that position through 5:00 PM on Friday, the 31st of July. To apply for either of these committees, please fill out a community service application. The easiest way to get there is through the city's website. You can, you get there by going www.cityofsparks.us/getinvolved, all one word there. Once you're there, click on volunteering for a Sparks Board, a commission or committee, fill out the application, and submit. Thank you very much, Mayor Smith.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. 7.3, presentation, update on the cumulative fiscal impact of the COVID-19 emergency. Jeff Kronk, welcome, Jeff.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and all council members. I'm going to keep my presentation brief and leave it open for your questions, but let me share my screen here real quick. Let's see if we can see this. Tell me if you can see that okay.
Yep.
That's okay. All right.
Yep.
What, what, just as a reminder, what we're, what my goal is here today is this is going to be a standing agenda item on the first on the first council meeting of every month, really just designed to, as we're progressing along this, this COVID journey, just to discuss what the financial impact is as, as we go along. So I think we've shared before how the primary revenue loss, if you will, is going to come from C taxes. And we've got a sixty-month lag on that. So unfortunately, you know, the data is going to be slow coming in. But we want to share what we have when we have, when we have it. So, so this first slide, I just wanted to share with you is just kind of the summary sheet. You know, it's really looking at what our expenses are incurred to date. And that's probably current as of last week. And then our revenue losses, again, most of that's coming from C taxes, which would only come through April. But again, that is the most current information that we have. So, so combined, you know, we're looking at about a million and a half dollars worth of expenses that we've incurred. Another million and a half revenues that we've lost. And then combined, you know, about a three million dollar impact is what we're looking at. And that's pretty much through June, again, knowing that there's that two-month lag with C tax. So, but it's important then to go to the bottom of the slide and say, well, what does it look like going forward? And I think it's important. So I want to talk a little bit about, you know, just what we're going to look like. Again, just based on the data that we have, I'm looking at about eight point six million dollars of revenue losses. And that's important to know because what I'm sharing with you right here, especially when it looks at the expenses to date, that's not considering any kind of grant reimbursement, whether it's through the CARES Fund, that two-point-two-trillion-dollar federal deal, or FEMA, or, you know, Department of Justice. There's a lot of different grants floating around there. None of them have been finalized yet. So I wanted to give you kind of a worst-case scenario of what we're looking at right now. So just remember, when we're going through this, that, that these numbers here don't, don't include any possible grand offset. Okay, so just wanted to give you kind of a little bit of the detail. This is still actually pretty high level, but of what the expenses are incurred to date. So I kind of broke it up into two sections, one being citywide expenses. So, so on the left side of your screen there, about three hundred and four thousand dollars that you see, that's money out the door that we spent that was not included in our, in our budget. And then the screen, the part of the screen on the right where it's the regional expenses, that's all the incident management team, regional activity that's going on. And of course, there's a lot of activity that's going on there. And I just grouped them into three large categories. But those include all kinds of things like P P testing, the, the trailers out on Edison Way. The professional services are for laundry services. So there's been a lot of activity that's going on regional wide. For, for us, again, going back to the, to the left side of the screen, the citywide expenses, the biggest piece is the recreational workers administrative, administrative leave that, that we did early on when, when COVID first, first hit us. So, and then I've got a little, little blurb at the very bottom. I just wanted to remind everybody again that this is not, you know, we're, we're hoping that these expenses are going to be funded through, through the CARES Act funding. We believe that they qualify. But we are literally going through that process to date. In fact, we had just heard from the, from the governor's office this weekend as to what the requirements are to do that. So, so again, as I come before you each month, you know, this, this picture is going to change. And I'm going to, I'm going to share the data as we, as we have it. But right now, you know, we're looking at about a million and a half expenses, assuming, assuming that no other grant funding would come through. But that's not what the expectation is. So diving into the revenue a little bit, and again, I just have four slides for you today, so we're almost done. But going into the revenues, like I said, losses to date is about a million and a half, C taxes being the largest. And that was, that's composed, the million dollars that you see there, the million fifty-nine thousand there is really just half of March, honestly, since the shutdown started halfway through March and then all of April. So just April itself, we saw over seven hundred thousand dollars of losses. So we hope that's the, the bottom, you know, the bottom mark. But boy, you know, as we all know, we're, we're not out of this thing yet. So we're not out of the woods. And in fact, just announced, just today, if you haven't seen it, California announced that they're, they're closing down significant portions of the economy again with the inside restaurants and bars and things like that. So again, this is something that's going to, that we're still struggling with. But as it stands, as I'm looking at the data points that we've got, you know, I can kind of project out based on the seasonality of things at eight point six million across the board, seven point one million being, being C tax. So again, just to kind of look at it in a different way, my last slide I wanted to share with you is, is a breakdown of what C tax looks like over the course of a couple of fiscal years. The, the solid blue line that you're seeing there are actual receipts that were, that were through February of this year. And then the dotted lines, the, the blue dotted line would be what we originally forecasted, starting in March, all the way through next fiscal year, so a sixteen-month period. That would be the blue dotted line. That's actually what's included in our budget, if you recall. And then that red dotted line, just again, to graphically look, how, how different it looks, shows what, what our new projection is. So if I had to, you know, file a budget today, for example, for that same sixteen-month period, that's what it would look like. So the difference between those, the, the blue dotted lines and the red dotted lines is the seven point one million dollars that I shared on just that previous slide. And that's about a seventeen percent loss. So that, that's pretty close to, to what, you know, some of the folks are projecting across the state, but for our region. And, but again, you know, this, this will change. So as, as we get more data and I'm, my hope is that I'm going to get more clarity and, and we'll keep bringing this for you every month as we go forward. So with that, those are my comments, but I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Jeff, could you go back two slides?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'm trying to justify, for instance, supplies and utilities. What would we be spending over and above what we would normally be spending?
Well, supplies and utilities comes from the regional side. And so most, most of that is supplies, you know, so that would be, that would be just.
Wouldn't we be using those supplies anyway?
I'm sorry?
We would be using those supplies anyway?
No, not necessarily. In, in fact, no, because these would all be supplies that are directly related to the regional command center, the things that they're doing for sanitary, anything that's related just to COVID.
Okay.
And that's also true for us on the first line item, if you see it on the left side as well. Same thing, equipment supplies, P P E, that's all under that same umbrella, anything that's related to COVID. That could be anything from masks to, to sanitary wipes, to anything, even from like some equipment that we need for teleworking. It could be anything related to, to COVID.
Okay, and Neil, the CARES Act should cover most of that stuff, shouldn't it?
We, we believe that all of the items you see in front of you here are CARES Act eligible. Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, any questions or comments?
I, I had a question.
Yes, Ms. Biden.
Hey, Jeff, stay on that slide right there. And the professional services is a pretty big amount of money. Could you give a little bit more detail? And then I guess, as we're looking forward, do we anticipate these regional expenses staying the same, going up? Do we not know? And obviously, we want to use CARES Act, but kind of to get an idea of what further costs moving forward. And I guess that Edison facility was, is a big expense and it's been sitting there empty. So I don't know if you can address, address those quick questions, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. So the professional services, a big chunk of that honestly is, is laundry services. That's probably the biggest piece. And unfortunately, we're, we're kind of beholden. I get this information from the county. And the level of detail I'm getting from the county is, is, is not the greatest. So I, I do have to apologize. I can't dive into everything that's, that's in the professional services. But I do know the bulk of it there is laundry services and, and other, other services that are just related to anything that they might farm out, so to speak, that they can't do, you know, by themselves. And that could be a host of different things. So as far as, I think your second question was, you know, how, how, how much do we expect going forward? Again, that's, that's, that's a great question, and a lot of that is certainly going to be unknown. But I think the expectation is that the initial burn rate was probably the biggest early on, especially as we're ramping up in, in early weeks, you know, of this crisis. The, the thinking is that the, the burn rate of the expenditures, if I could say it that way, should slow down, you know, going forward. But again, you know, we're kind of at the, the whim of the virus too. So, you know, a lot of this is, is going to play out as, as it goes. But what we, what we think is that the, the, the costs have, have kind of leveled off and should start tapering down. Now, that means that they're still going to increase, it's just that they won't increase as quickly. So, you know, but again, a, a lot of that still has to play out. Does that help? Did they answer?
Yeah, it does. I guess the third one was the Edison facility. And Edison, I don't know if that's for you or might be for Neil.
I see Neil raising his hand and I will happily defer.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take the Edison trailers one. You, you recall that, that when we made the decision to, to lease those trailers, you know, we were concerned about much bigger numbers in our community. And in order to get the trailers to stay in our community, we had to agree to a six-month lease. So essentially, we're paying for the trailers. If I'm counting, you know, you're counting on my fingers while talking in public is a dangerous thing to endeavor into. But I think that takes us through the month of September. And granted, you're absolutely right, we have not placed anybody out there yet. What we are doing at this point in time is, is going through the process of closing down what are the recurring expenses, to have it set up and, and shuttering it so that we'll get to the point where we're just essentially making those lease payments every month, because it does not appear as though we're going to need to use those Edison trailers between now and, and the end of our, end of our lease. So, you know, we, we did have to commit to a, a six-month lease to get the, to get the owner to be willing to leave them here, because they did have alternate use for them out of state. So that's, you know, hindsight's always better in these kinds of situations than the information you have when you make the decisions. You know, but there, there, there we are. We're, we're limiting our expenses as relates to the Edison trailers between now and the end of September.
Well, and I, I appreciate the fact that we did get those set up at the time. That decision absolutely was the correct decision to make. Is there, and I know through the last couple of months, we've looked at possibilities of utilizing those trailers for other, other uses since they're there. Do we have other COVID or community uses? Or are we so close to the end of the six months, we haven't found an appropriate short-term use for trailers that are sitting there with no one in them?
We do not have a, a qualifiable COVID-related use for those trailers. There have been lots of suggestions to, to use those for, for other, other social problems we have in our community. The, the challenge there is, as we've, as we've looked into, you know, those kinds of potentials, they haven't qualified for a use of, of COVID funds or, or use of FEMA or emergency funds. So we've had to, we've had to back away from that because we're, you know, we wouldn't want to take those expenses onto our books per se. We want to be able to use emergency funds to pay those bills. So that's been the, the limiting factor as to, you know, we haven't had COVID-related need for those buildings yet. And, and we don't want to put them to use doing other things and then take on that cost as a, you know, as, as one hundred percent as, as one of our.
Okay, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Dare.
Originally, we spoke, if you go up to the first slide, I think it is, we were more around, going to be around an eleven million to twelve million dollar loss. So am I, am I correct on that? So we are looking, you didn't say there's any good news. So I wanted to say that this looks better than the original thing you said. It doesn't mean easy, and it definitely means we still have a lot of work to do. But am I accurate in that?
Yep, absolutely. So essentially, March and April, again, those are the two data points that we have to work on, came in better than our worst-case, you know, thought. So that, that could have been a lot worse. So just as an example, April losses came in at twenty-five percent, when we thought, you know, that could be all the way up to fifty percent. So it was actually a little bit of a surprise, really, across the state, a pleasant surprise to see those, those months. Really, that's a month and a half, honestly, come in a little bit better than, than what we had feared was possible. So, so yes, the, the number at the bottom there that you see, the eight point six, is significantly better. I, I believe originally, you know, when I was looking at C tax losses alone, that was in that nine million plus dollar range. So, you know, but again, give us another couple of months and that number could change again. So, you know, i- i- it's difficult when we're looking at, and I think it's important, I'll step back half a step here, to, to note that these are over sixteen months, you know, that we're trying to do a projection. And honestly, that's, that's really sixteen months dealing with about a month and a half worth of data points. So, so, you know, it's, it's, it's the best guess at this point, but it's kind of the best that we've got. And it's nice to at least say that it is better than what we had originally looked. But again, you know, I, I'm, I'm in no way of, you know, in a position of being comfortable saying that we're out of the woods, especially when I start seeing, you know, announcements like we just did today out of California. And, you know, it's just as this virus is raging, you know, the, 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 the prospect, I guess I could say, of, of an economic recovery just gets more and more dim. So, you know, we'll see. And that's why I thought it was important to come before you every month and, and bring this as we go, so I can kind of give you the, the latest and greatest data that we've got. Hopefully, that number will keep going down. But, you know, we'll, we'll see. But yes, you're absolutely right.
I just have one more question, just regarding state finances. If, if the best, if there's anything regarding statewide, because they're obviously hemorrhaging as well, that's going to affect us, it'd be great to have that as part of this conversation, just because it, it's good, it's good to see that, that, if there is. And I say that sometimes it might be in ways we don't see as clear, because it will affect some things for sure of what happens in our valley. But that would be helpful as well in the future, because I know they're going to make, making some interesting cuts. And what does that mean for us? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, if, if I could.
Mr. Anderson.
Jeff, on your total revenue losses that you have projected through fiscal twenty-one, could you just tell us a little bit about what you're looking at as far as how you, how you're calculating those? And what, basically, which crystal ball are you looking at?
Yeah, pull them out, you know, as the day gets, goes on, right? Different crystal ball for a different reason. Mainly, I, I'll, I'll start with the C tax especially, because that's, that's the one, you know, that's such a big number for it. But, you know, I, I base it on seasonality and, and a lot of history. So I've been tracking C tax receipts, which is mostly sales taxes, to be honest. Eighty percent of the consolidated taxes, sales taxes. So that's why there's such a direct correlation. But I've got a lot of data that goes all the way back before the, the Great Recession, you know, some ten-plus years ago now. And I'm able to, to pinpoint some, some pretty, pretty stable seasonal movements, if you will. And, and it's funny, the, the consumer has some, some interesting patterns. What's interesting about this one is that you almost have to throw those patterns out the window, because we've never been in a situation where everything got closed down for an entire month or so. So we saw some things, you know, when we're looking at like sales reports that were honestly quite surprising, you know, and, and then not surprising. Like, like, for example, online sales went through the roof, you know? They, they were up over a hundred and fifty percent, you know, for the month. So people were still spending, the economy was still moving, but just in different ways. So what, what you have to do is look at those seasonal patterns and, and kind of compare that with, with what you see going on. Like, for an example, you know, we know there's a lot of job losses, but we also know a lot of people have been getting unemployment. And, and that extra, I'm going to call it extra, you know, federal six hundred dollars, that, that's going to be expiring in July. Well, how much of that was, was backstopping us, you know, to that degree? So, so what I'm doing is looking forward is, is taking those seasonal, the seasonalities, if you will, of the sales taxes in, in the various categories, whether it's autos, whether it's restaurants, whether it's online sales, so on and so forth, and try to mirror up, you know, what's, what, the actual activity of what people are doing. So, so anyway, that's sales taxes. It, it's a big model, and I won't get into all the, all the gritty details, but that's essentially what I look at in, in all the different sales categories and try to overlay, you know, what's happening from federal stimulus and, you know, what does that mean in, in July, when that goes away at the end of July? What would that mean for our August sales? Fair share taxes is, is another component of that. So, so that's, I won't, I won't bore you with the history on that, that's got a lot of history on it. But that goes back to nineteen eighty and, but again, it's based on sales taxes. So very similar analysis there. Business license fees surprises us a little bit. They're a little bit lower than in, in the early months, you know, that March through June, when this thing first hit, than what we anticipated. But the cumulative impact going forward into next fiscal year, we're expecting about a ten percent decline. So you combine what we saw last fiscal year with the ten percent decline that we're going to expect for next fiscal year, and then that comes up to nine hundred thousand. And then, and then the gaming license fees are pretty small. There may be other categories too. And this is just, again, based off on what we know. So a lot of our, a lot of our revenue sources come in at, at different levels or different timing. So like, for example, our marijuana license fees, our, a lot of our franchise fees come in on a quarterly basis. And we have not seen that second quarter yet, the second quarter of the calendar. So which would be our fourth quarter of fiscal year, haven't seen that yet. So we'll see, um, you know, we'll see how that actually comes in. So as I'm presenting these to you, um, on, on a monthly basis, um, you should see a, a little bit more clarity, um, especially on our revenue side. As we're going forward, as we're closing out the books. Does that help?
Yes, thank, thank you very much for, uh, going into a little more detail there.
You bet.
Okay, anybody else? Questions or comments?
Uh, myself, Ron.
Mr. Abbott.
Yeah, and Jeff, just for the rec, can you just explain C tax and how, how delayed it is and when we get the update? And all that sort of stuff?
Yep, yes, absolutely. So, um, C tax is short for consolidated taxes, uh, which just as a quick reminder is, is a component of six, six different components make that up. Um, and, and that's collected by the state, but distributed to us 60 days after, uh, the, the, the month of activity. So for example, April's activity, um, we just recently got at the end of June. So there's always that, that two month lag.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, Jeff.
You bet. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good job. Okay, we'll move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Okay, looking for a motion?
Move to approve the consent items.
We have a motion from Mr. Dare.
Second, Abbott.
And a second from Mr. Abbott. Any, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to general business 9.1. Consideration and possible acceptance of a grant award from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance, Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program in the amount of $99,236. And that would be, oops, wrong, wrong page. Chief, are you here? Chief Kroll.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I, I had to get off the unmute side of the, uh, of the panel.
Apologize. We got you now.
Thank you very much for having me, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Chief Kroll, your Sparks Police Chief here. Before you today, uh, with an agenda item that is described would, uh, provide for a grant from the Office of Justice, Justice Programs Bureau of Justice Assistance in the amount of $99,236. Essentially what this grant would do would be to provide funding to, um, for funds already expended for purchase of COVID related items, including protective gear, showers, uh, things of those nature that we've had to put in place due to the COVID pandemic, uh, which started obviously back in March. And I apologize, I lost part of my notes, but, uh, it is staff's recommendation that the council accept this grant. And with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, questions or comments?
I had a question.
Ms. Bybee.
Um, yeah, Chief, on here it also says for overtime. Are you able to use this grant for overtime? And do we know how much overtime we have already had? Is this just going to reimburse us? Or will it cover some future overtime that we could continue to have responding to the COVID crisis?
This may be one that Mr. Kronk would need to answer in part, but essentially this would be for repayment of overtime already accrued. We have had to alter many of the duties and responsibilities of the people in our department, including having them work from home, cover shifts for, and for other employees, things of that nature. Those numbers have been coded through the time card keeping, uh, the time card system, excuse me, uh, and should be readily, readily available there.
Okay. Do, do we know moving forward, do you, will, will we exhaust the 99,000 already? Or will we have some moving forward for additional clauses, costs that we anticipate in the future?
Uh, I don't believe we expended it all yet. Perhaps Mr. Kronk could help me there. I do believe that there are still some funds available.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, if I can, if you can hear me, if I can jump in just real quick. Um, and I actually did include that on one of my, on my slide, um, of the citywide expenses. We've spent a little over 18,000, so $18,600, uh, that we expect that this grant would cover. Which, you know, obviously is far short of, um, that, that's just expenditures to date. So there's plenty of room still left on the grant to, to, uh, to cover more if that should be necessary.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, looking for a motion about the grant.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Anderson.
Move to accept the $99,236,000 grant award from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance Coronavirus Supplemental Funding Program.
Okay, we have a motion. I'm looking for a second. Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Chief, would you, while I've got you here, would you call me after the meeting?
Uh, yes, sir, I will.
Thank you. Okay, 9.2. Consideration and possible ratification of an amendment and extension of agreement AC 5661 for services between Well Care Services Reno LLC and Washoe County, the City of Sparks, the City of Reno, and the Washoe County Health District for provision of short-term housing services for the purpose of isolation or quarantine to individuals residing in Washoe County who have tested positive for COVID-19. And Neil, is that you?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon again, Mayor Smith, members of the council. For the record, Neil Kurtz, your city manager. I am here today seeking your ratification on an amendment that I agreed to, uh, last week, or it might have been the week before, on this, uh, this Well Care Agreement. You might recall ratifying the initial agreement back on April 13th, where we, in working in partnership with the City of Reno and Washoe County, uh, contracted with Well Care to provide us 43 beds, uh, to, to help, you know, isolate somebody that needed housing services that had, you know, had come down with the COVID-19, uh, you know, symptoms. And so we, we initially had an agreement that ran roughly through the end of June, uh, for those 43 beds. We realized that we weren't actually using all of those beds, but that we still had a need, we, you know, and, and just following along, we've been using between, say, 10 and 14 of those beds fairly routinely. We did have one short period of time where the staff over there, uh, a number of the staff members needed to be isolated. So we shut the whole thing down for a few days, but it's back up and running. So seeing that we're running typically between that need for 10 to 14 beds a day, we did negotiate an extension with Well Care, uh, to provide us to cut the availability down to 22 beds and extend the contract out through the end of October, uh, for a total, uh, additional cost of $282,600. Our 15% share of that, based on the, uh, previously approved pressure agreement, will be $42,390. There, there is a, a clause in the agreement that should we need to go beyond the 22 that we are contracting for now, that that would come at a, at a fixed rate of $100 per bed per day, uh, but only be used on an as needed basis, uh, with a, with a one-time $240 cleaning fee for each one of those beds, only again if, if we use it. So, uh, this is an agreement that I have already signed on our behalf and I am here today seeking your ratification. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions or comments? Okay, we are looking for a motion to create a, a temporary business license.
Well, actually, we, we need a motion to ratify my contract approval. We're still on, we're 92.
What? Oh, I'm sorry.
We need a vote.
Down to number 10.
I can make that motion.
Okay, make the motion.
I moved to ratify the amendment and extension of agreement AC 5661 for services between Well Care Services Reno LLC and Washoe County, the City of Sparks, the City of Reno, and the Washoe County Health District for the provision of a short-term housing services for the purpose of isolation or quarantine to individuals residing in Washoe County who have tested positive for COVID-19 or, or suspected of having COVID-19. An additional amount up to $282,600 with the City of Sparks share being 15% of the total unreimbursed cost.
Thank you, Mr. Dare. Looking for a second? Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Lawson.
Yeah, just, uh, number one, I think Well Care is doing a good job for us in this area. What, and what they, and them stepping up to the plate to help out in this crisis has been invaluable. It was pretty well spent in my mind.
Absolutely. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, Neil.
Thank you very much.
It's a second reading, public hearing, discussion and possible adoption of bill number 2775 to amend Title V of the Sparks Municipal Code to create a temporary business license. CA 519 for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize for interrupting, but before we begin this item, because they're public hearing items, um, there are a number of hands that are currently raised, um, to speak during public comment. And so I just want to announce that we are going to lower all hands. If anybody would like to speak for these public hearing items, then they will need to re-raise their hand. Otherwise I will re-announce public comment during, uh, item 12.1.
And after we have some discussion with the council, I'll open up public comment.
Correct.
Okay. This is, uh, this is Jim Rundle. Where's Jim?
I'm here, Mr. Mayor. Good to see you. Good to see you. Good to see you all. City Council, Jim Rundle, planning manager. The City of, the City of Sparks requires anyone conducting business in the City of Sparks to get a business license. The current price for a business license is $109. As we all know, in a typical year, the city is renowned for its fantastic special events. These events are approved and sponsored through the city's Parks and Recreation Department. Crafters, farmers, retailers all use that special event and get a temporary vendor permit, which costs $15. That $15 temporary vendor permit essentially acts as a temporary business license for those special events. Now, the reason we're here today is what if someone chooses to conduct a farmer's market or a craft show or a craft fair on private property? Well, to officially comply with the city ordinance, they would need to come in and get a $109 business license for each vendor participating in that craft show, for example. Oftentimes, these crafters just come into town for this craft show for a one-time event. They come to the city one time and go back, go back home. While they would like to obtain the appropriate permitting for that special, that city craft show, that craft show hosted in the City of Sparks, the cost of $109 inhibits them from coming and getting that, because it tends to exceed what they actually make for a profit anyway. So sometimes they just don't come and other times they just do it without getting the appropriate permit. So what we're proposing today with the city council directed us to go back and look at was to propose a temporary business license. So we're proposing a temporary business license in the amount of $15 with a $2 technology fee. I know Councilman Lawson always likes to get that technology where we can provide some efficiency, so we got it in there. This would permit crafters, farmers, merchants to comply with these, to comply with the city standard to get a business license for these small events where they're required to do so. The proposed standards for the temporary business license would to be, you couldn't have one for more than six days. If you got one, you needed, you would need to wait seven days before you could get another one. And then lastly, you would only be able to get a total of six in a 12-month period. Why did we limit it to six? Well, if you're doing more than six, uh, it's more cost effective to get the regular business license. Mr. Mayor, Sparks Council, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, I just want to thank staff for working on this and, and putting this into place. Yeah, I've been contacted by one of the small event organizers and this is going to be a, a great deal of help for them. They do it on a private property and they want to be legal, but what they were finding was they just didn't have enough people that wanted to participate with the $100 fee. So taking it down to this level, they'll be able to, to put on the event once again. So thank you very much.
Okay. Any more comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll open up the public comment period. Anybody wishing to speak this time? Lisa.
So if there is anybody who wishes to speak on item 10.1, the temporary business license, please press star nine from your telephone or raise your hand, um, on your, uh, Zoom app. And we'll, we'll give them just a moment, sir.
Okay.
And I'm showing none.
Okay, then seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for action. Looking for a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Bybee.
I move to adopt bill 2775 to amend Title V of the Sparks Municipal Code to create a temporary business license.
Okay, we have a motion for a second. Mr. Abbott?
I can.
Yep, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, Jim. Okay, 10.2, second reading, public hearing, discussion and possible adoption of bill number 2774 and ordinance amending Sparks Municipal Code Chapters 5.22, 5.24, and 5.28 to repeal requirements gaming employers and bartenders obtain work permits and providing other matters properly related to their. Allison.
Good afternoon, Mayor Smith and City Council. I'm Assistant City Attorney Allison McCormick. And I'm here before you today asking you to consider bill number 2774. That would repeal requirements that gaming employees and bartenders get city work permits. I'll address the gaming employees provisions first. Sparks Municipal Code 5.24.075 currently requires gaming employees in the city to have work permits issued by Sparks Police Department. Uh, those employees have to get a criminal background check to ensure that they haven't been convicted of certain crimes or otherwise unqualified to work in the gaming industry. As City Council is aware, the gaming industry is pretty heavily regulated. The gaming, uh, the board conducts criminal background checks. Employees must certify that they aren't delinquent on child support. And the registration can be suspended or revoked for certain crimes or violations of other board requirements. The city's work permit requirements are therefore very redundant to the state's requirements. And the city, in fact, has not enforced its requirements for gaming employees for several years. Uh, repealing those requirements would bring Sparks Municipal Code in line with current practice. As to bartenders, Sparks Municipal Code 5.40, bartenders patient and
Allison, can you hear me? Allison?
Fires 10 days after changing jobs. The fee for work in fiscal year 19, the city collects $15,000. The fee for work, yes.
Yes, you can hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
You're breaking, you're, you're breaking up, um, pretty bad.
Okay.
We have the item.
I will close out, rejoin and see if that fixes it.
That's, uh, that, that's certainly worth a try, but I'll tell you that we've been struggling with our internet access at City Hall on and off all day long. You know, hopefully getting out and getting back in will, will help clear it up. But, uh, frankly, I'm surprised we got this far into the meeting before we had, before we ran into this, so.
Okay, so if, um, if, if she doesn't, we have the information, we can, uh, we can go from there, but let's give it back.
If that doesn't work, we can try turning off her video also, just to take less bandwidth and see if she's able to give her presentation.
Can you hear us, Allison?
I can, uh, I can only see you, Mr. Mayor. I can't see anyone else.
That's not a bad thing. No, um, Uh, we lost probably the last part of your presentation.
Okay, um. What, what was the last thing that you heard?
Wake up, get out of bed, Ron. You got a meeting. That was the last. We were talking about why they get the permits, why they have to get the permits and why they, uh, why we, we checked on them, whether they had any.
Okay. Uh, so for gaming employees, uh, the Sparks Municipal Code currently requires that a gaming employee in the city get a criminal background check to make sure that the person is not unqualified to work in the gaming industry. Nevada Gaming Control Board has very similar requirements. Gaming employees must register with the board. The board conducts a criminal background check. Uh, gaming employees must certify that they aren't delinquent on child support payments, and the board can suspend or revoke an employee's registration if they commit certain crimes or violations of board regulations. Based on those requirements that the Gaming Control Board has, the city's work permit requirements are redundant and have actually not been enforced for several years. So repealing those provisions of the code would bring the code in line with our current practices.
Okay.
As to bartenders, SMC five point two-eight point two-four-zero requires bartenders in the city to have work permits, which requires a criminal background check. The work permit is tied to a specific location and expires ten days after a bartender changes jobs. Uh, the fee is twenty-five dollars plus a twenty-seven dollar fingerprint fee, so fifty-two dollars total. And in fiscal year nineteen, the city collected almost fifteen thousand dollars in those bartender work permit fees. Uh, the
Allison, Allison, are those, are those yearly fees or one, one-time fee?
Um, I believe it is yearly. It might be. It is, a, a work permit is good for five years, or if the person changes jobs, they have to get a new, a new work permit.
Okay.
Um, the alcoholic beverage industry is heavily regulated by the state. Bartenders are required by the state to have an alcohol education card, and that indicates that they've completed an alcoholic beverage awareness program, uh, so how to spot that someone is too intoxicated to get served again. How to prevent and break up fights, those kinds of things that you would want a bartender to know how to do. Uh, eliminating the work permit requirement would forego an estimated fourteen thousand five hundred dollars in fee revenue per year. Uh, but would, it would eliminate the work and expense of processing the work permit applications and conducting background checks. Uh, proactive enforcement of work permit requirements for bartenders is frankly not a high priority. Uh, so compliant businesses and employees go through the expense and hassle of getting work permits and keeping them up to date, whereas non-compliant businesses and bartenders are really unlikely to face any consequences at all. Uh, in short, these work permit requirements appear to be outdated, and they don't provide significant benefits to the public health, safety, or welfare. Uh, and as Northern Nevada and Sparks specifically recovers from long-term business closures due to COVID nineteen, you know, bars in Washoe County have just been ordered to be closed again. Uh, eliminating barriers to businesses and potential employees, uh, to find work again when they're able to, where that's possible, can aid in that recovery. Uh, for these reasons, staff does recommend approval of this bill, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? Okay, I see none. I will open it up to the public. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time, Lisa?
So if anybody would like to provide public comment regarding the work permit requirements for gaming and bartenders, please press star nine on your telephone or raise your hand to speak. And it looks like we do have a few, sir.
Okay.
The first public comment is going to be from Jacob Gruisem. Jacob, your line is open. Please state your name for the record.
Are you there, Jason? Jacob?
Doesn't look like he's responding.
Okay.
Um, so I will move on to the next one. Um, the next public comment is from telephone number seven seven five, six eight five eight two nine four. Please state your name for the record and begin speaking.
Yes, my name is Deontay Swartzbager, and, um, first of all, a comment on that, um, work permit. I think we need to repeal that altogether. Um, there's no, I don't see a reason why you need to go and obtain another work permit when you already have to pay that licensee fee for the alcohol awareness. Now I'm a bartender, and I bartend in Reno, and there's nothing that's going to get a work permit besides you're just discriminating against others. You want to, why do we need, we're working a bar, we're serving alcohol. If we can serve the alcohol and complete our job correctly, and if we can see that we cannot serve this person because they're way into intoxicated, there's no other qualifications I need besides knowing how to make a drink. By you saying that I had to have a work permit in Sparks, it's straight just discriminating where I can't find a job. Now you want to repeal it because you see that because of COVID, it's going to be harder for us to find a job. It's harder for us to find a job in general, and you guys make these rules for no reason. Please back it because Reno does not, Reno does not enforce no work permit. You get your alcohol awareness card. At eighteen years old, you're allowed to obtain that, and you can be in a place where it serves alcohol. You can't serve drinks. When you're twenty-one, as long as you can see that someone's too intoxicated, you know how to de-escalate a problem, and you know how to do basic customer service, you don't need to do anything else. If that's the case, that all McDonald's workers need to go through special work permits working at McDonald's because they're making my food. They got the health, my health on their hands to make sure they know how to make food. But you, you, we need your help to tell me I can make a, um, an apple or a vodka Red Bull. We do not need that. You're literally just discriminating against people that will literally not get that because if you weren't going to have limitations on it, why would you need a background check? So obviously, there's going to be limitations. What limitations could you have to back that, that clause?
Did I do it, Jacob?
Jacob, I'm Devonte.
Oh, Devonte, I'm sorry. I'm one, one, one behind it. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. Are you?
I mean, that, yeah, yeah, that, yeah, that, that has been, for, for now, I'm definitely going to still be on air because I need to make comments on the other, but I'll, for now, yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Lisa?
It looks like our next public comment regarding this item is from seven oh two, five seven six, four six nine two. Your line is open. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Carrie Chan, and I'm calling because, as you know, uh, black, brown, and poor people are disproportionately jailed um, by police officers, and, um, requiring bartenders and gaming, uh, employees to have background checks is another way that the system discriminates and, uh, further, uh, enforces poverty, uh, in the lives of black, brown, and poor communities. Um, and so, uh, to continue this requirement, uh, is, uh, would make you conflicted in a system that doesn't allow black and brown people to thrive, um, and forces them to live in poverty their entire life. Uh, so, um, and of course, the police are conflicted in, uh, jailing black and brown people disproportionately. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the next public comment, sir, is from Moto G. Your line is open. Please, uh, state your name for the record.
Moto G.
Actually, Lisa, it looks like, oh, no, there it changed.
I'm here, can you hear me?
There we go.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
My name's Charles Whitaker.
Okay, Charles, go ahead.
Thanks. I'm currently outside the Sparks City Council in solidarity with the family of Makai Lee, an eighteen-year-old suicidal young member of our community who was murdered by officers on the Sparks Police Force. There has been no justice for the family of Makai, and in fact, his mother Susan has been harassed and stalked by members of, of our police department. Absolutely unacceptable, and that is no way for a police department or a city to conduct itself. Makai needed mental health crisis intervention. Why was the most team that responds to crises in our community, people who have mental health crises, not sent out to take care for Makai? Why was Makai seen as a threat? And I'll just let you know that there is a firm consensus that it is become a, because of systemic racism and implicit bias within police forces. The Sparks Police, in particular, has a habit of murdering members of our community who are suffering from mental health crisis. The same, one of the same officers who delivered lethal blows to Makai slayed a veteran in our community in his backyard when he was suffering from PTSD. These police officers were also awarded for their recognition in slaying, murdering helpless individuals of our community. I know there are no black members of the Sparks City Council. I know there are a few black people on this call, but you need to understand how members of your community feel. That even though the DA released his investigation, took him five months, at least it was a little bit faster than the last officer-involved shooting, that is no, there is no justification for killing a member of our community who needed crisis intervention. Let me repeat that. There is no reason to kill a member of our community who also is black, who also is eighteen, who also was suicidal, and is a member of our community. They shot him in cold blood. This is a racist issue. This is a policing issue. This is an issue of mental health resources. So I implore the Sparks City Council to stop spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to buy new police toys for your murderous cops, and instead, fully fund mental health services. And you need to do something to find justice and reconciliation for the families of victims who, who have none. And I implore you to actually meet and consider this action item and not act like a black man in our community didn't, wasn't just murdered by your cops.
Uh, Mister Mayor, this is your City Attorney Chad Adams. Uh, you certainly have the discretion, sir, during these public comments to limit the conversations and the comments to the specific agenda item that public comment is allowed on.
I was just going to say that anybody that's on the line that wants to make public comment, it must be on the ten point two, item that we're reading, which is municipal codes. There'll be another time at the end of the meeting for, for regular pu- public comment, and you can comment on anything that you, that you feel like. So, um, Lisa, is there anybody else on the line?
Well, there is, currently, Mister Mayor, there are still four hands raised.
Okay, so if any of the people on, on the line would like to talk about police brutality or whatever, um, that would be on twelve point one.
Correct.
Who's next?
So the next public comment, um, is for telephone number seven zero two, five four two. Nope, we hung up. Hold on. Uh, seven seven five, two five zero, one six one two. I will remind you that you are speaking regarding the, um, work permit requirements um, in item ten point two. Please state your name for the record. Hello?
Okay, move on to the next one, Lisa.
Absolutely, sir. Um, so the last public comment that I'm showing is from, we're going to try Jacob Grusim again. Jacob, your line is open. Please state your name for the record.
Can you all hear me now?
Jacob, we can hear you.
Awesome. So my name is Jacob Grusim. I'm the General Manager of Pax and Pints and New Bar in Downtown Sparks. And I'd also really like to, uh, I appreciate all the time that you're giving me. So the hardest part, when we started getting out of the quarantine, was trying to bring people on because the office at the police station was closed to get the alcohol permit just for Sparks. And so I was trying to bring in local citizens to start working, but I didn't want to have them face a fine or my business potentially face a fine. So I wasn't able to get them a job. And I think it'd be best if we just removed this, so then once the bars and restaurants do open up, we could get back to work as fast as possible, and we have less of a stress impact on all of our citizens. Um, yeah, that's about it.
Thank you for those comments. Anybody else on the line?
Um, that is all I'm showing currently, sir.
Okay, seeing nobody else, we'll bring it back to the council for action on ten point two. Um, are there any further questions?
Just a quick one, Mister Mayor. Allison, do you know how, uh, old that law is, that ordinance?
Uh, I can find out in a jiffy.
We know it's been around a while. We're trying to correct it right now, so.
I, I get it. I just want to put this in perspective that this is not something that was dawned on us yesterday.
Yeah. Uh, Mister Dare?
I think it's important to note, just because some of the public comment, that they understand that this is a temporary something. This is something that we're changing our code, something we've been talking about for a while, and COVID just confirms some of the reasons why. But it's, it's permanent, and it's, uh, it's related to a best practice. Thanks.
Yes. Allison?
Uh, to answer Councilman Lawson's question, uh, it looks like that was added to the code in two thousand three.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions or comments, additional questions or comments for Allison? Seeing none, looking for a motion, Mister Abbott?
Yeah, I'll take the motion and a comment after. Um, I move to adopt bill number two seven seven four and ordinance amending Sparks Municipal Code chapters five point two-two, uh, five point two-four and five point two-eight to repeal requirements that gaming employees and bartenders obtain work permit and providing other matters properly related there to.
Okay, we have a motion for a second, uh, Mister Dare.
I can second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mister Abbott?
Just gonna say, you know, I actually had a work permit back when I was first running for office, I was bartending, and, you know, many friends of bartending, and it just seems kind of very redundant, as we said earlier. So I'm happy we're taking care of this today, and, uh, I'll definitely be supporting it.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? To see unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to number eleven, planning and zoning public hearings and actions items. We have none. I'll open up the public comment. Anybody in the public wishing to comment at this time? Lisa?
All right, so if anybody is wishing to provide public comment, press star nine from your telephone or indicate your desire to speak by raising your hand via your Zoom app, and we will give everybody just a minute to go ahead and do that, sir. All right, so we are going to start with the first one. I have a public comment from seven seven five, six eight five, eight two nine four. Your line is open. Please state your name for the record.
Deontay Swartzbager again. Um, just to verify, just clarify, this is on everything, yes?
Yeah, this is general public comment. You can speak on whatever.
All right. The first thing I want to, uh, kind of just want to point out is so Reno PD just asked for a, well, grant, you guys granted them a grant for more overtime pay, right? Because they have to pay back the overtime they already paid. So they got paid, right? Paid for that overtime. Yeah, we got shut down, and I still have not been paid for any time of COVID. Right? You gotta talk about COVID laws, dude. You guys are saying what, what you guys spent. You spent, let me, I screenshotted it so I can clearly to what your notes are saying. You guys spent so much money on overtime for public safety. Give me two seconds. SC, regardless, your people aren't getting paid. Your people
Your people of the city of Sparks aren't getting paid. The people of the city of Reno are not getting paid. Yet you just granted more funding to the police to pay their overtime. How about your people that need the money to live and to work in economy that you, that the governor keeps shutting down, and our city is doing nothing to stand with us and stand up against the tyranny? Because there's no path away unless the governor sits away and obviously our mayor of Sparks, Reno, does it not affect you? If you're not standing up with everybody saying you cannot keep shutting it down just because people are wearing masks? That's exactly why he's like, he threatened, he said, if you do not wear masks, we're shutting down. You don't need to be standing with your people. Your people are going homeless. But you're, they're getting, as soon as that amendment was done in July, it's done, the landlords are taking people out, they're homeless, they have no money to invest, they have not been, okay, you have enough money, I'm about, I'm about seven grand, because I was unemployed in the first. It was very shut down. They made me off because I was not allowed to work because he shut it down. I'm not, I'm paid one, that's seven grand I've not been paid. How was I supposed to pay my bills? How was I supposed to live? How was I supposed to be American when you guys are literally not even helping us? It's like, oh, here's, here's all this money's been paying me expenses, but you weren't there to get it for a month. But hey, the chief of police here just got us in the town, don't ask for half a money and a grand, you guys said yes. What? What? How much you pay back your people? How much you put more funding in their training? You know, in Canada, their police force meditate every single day all together to measure all their minds and bodies of instinct and either white minds handle civilization and civil destruction. They don't carry guns, they don't shoot people because he's trigger-hopped or he's so stressed out. You're stressed out for no reason. You're stressed out and pointing eight-point B from that nine-one-one call in the, in the case of Makai Lee. The nine-one-one call, he was here to, you would know, oh, this guy scared me. You guys literally need to stop spending money on pointless stuff, and you need to fund our schools. You need to, stop giving them more money. Give them more training. Give them the ability to handle discrepancies. If you don't want to only send most out, how about every one officer that gets sent out to a mental health is one most.
Sir, could you wrap it up, please?
Come on, hold on. Oh.
Okay. Lisa?
Mr. Mayor, the next public comment is from Lilith Barron. Lilith, your line, no, Lilith left. Okay, I apologize, sir. Looks like the next public comment is from seven seven five three seven eight four eight one three. Your line is open.
Hi, my name is Erin Miller. Oh, sorry. My name is Erin Miller. I'm going to read you a number of names of people who are murdered by Sparks Police Department. We're starting with Renal Zendejas, murdered on five four twenty twenty. Makai Lee was murdered on one five two thousand twenty. Christopher Helen Cohen was murdered ten fifteen twenty sixteen by Sparks PD. Jose Dominguez, four twenty eight two thousand nineteen, murdered by Sparks PD. Jacob Edwards, murdered two twenty one twenty twenty, killed by Sparks Police Department. Monica Ritchie, ten thirteen twenty thirteen, murdered by Sparks Police Department. You are giving forty percent, forty percent of the city's budget to the police. That money could go towards mental health services. That money could go towards social services. That money could go towards education, and then you were funneling it in to a system that murders black and brown people disproportionately. You are funding it into a system that disenfranchises, targets, terrorizes black and brown people with great impunity. You do not care about the community if you continue to grant them almost a hundred and thousand dollars to continue to kill our people. Even members of our community, where is your conscience? Where is your heart? Where is your soul? You don't care about the people. You don't even care about protecting. You're white supremacist dangerous. You don't care about people of color, or that you're funding communities. You're funding mental health.
Lisa? We'll go to the next caller, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The next public comment is from seven oh two five seven six four six nine two. And I would just like to remind everybody to please be civil when speaking your comments.
Hi, my name is Tara Chan. I'm calling because, well, one, I just want to say, what is civility? You're gonna get it off on the last call if you're not being civil, but you're permitting people to murder people that they're sworn to protect and serve. Is that civility to you? And also, I'm just gonna say that forty percent of the entire Sparks budget goes to police officers. Police officers that don't know how to de-escalate, don't care people, care about people, have histories of killing people. You give them more guns, three armored vehicles, to one police officer. And you think that you're gonna do anything but murder people that are armed to the fucking, the fricking, sorry, teeth? And you just, you are surprised that when you give them more money, they kill people? You're gonna act like it's not your fault? If they need money for masks, as your ninety-nine thousand grant that you just approved this week before for showers or whatever? You know what? They should maybe just sell a couple of those armored vehicles. I think they'll be just fine. You can, how could you give them more money after hearing everything you've heard? How can you just immediately give them more money knowing that they kill people? There's nothing to do but defund the police. Anything less makes you complicit to the next murder that happens. And the last one that happened too. There is no funding for issues that support our community, and there's just ample infinite funding for the guns and the armored vehicles and the shields and the barricades. Do you want the police to be at war with your citizens? Then why are you arming them like an army? How could you be surprised when they murder people? How can you act like it's not your fault when you just approved to give them more money? How dare you? Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa?
The next public comment is from seven seven five two five zero one six one two. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, this is Gino Martini calling in. You know, I'm about to add it up to my ears with this, with the people complaining about the police. You know, our police force is really very, very good, and I commend them for what they do. And all these people with seven oh two area codes calling in, I don't get it. You don't belong to this community. So if you've got a big trouble with our police, just try to walk a mile in their shoes and see what happens. And you want to defund the police? I saw a little video today that just cracked me up. The policeman sitting in a car in a big city, and he was talking to the camera. And he said, let me tell you something, what's really funny. We got a call from a group that wanted to have a protest to defund the police. And you know what they asked for? They want police presence. That really makes a lot of sense, doesn't it? So, boys and girls, you kids that are so angry and so socially liberal, get a clue, please. Walk in the, walk a mile in a policeman's shoes. Get off your collective butt. Go out and ride with a policeman sometime. Do a ride-along, see what they do, see what they go through. You have no clue, really. You know, I, like a great councilman that I knew before, who's still alive, he had a saying that I loved. He said, right now, my fundraiser is pegging in the red, and that's no kidding. I cannot believe what I'm hearing on these public comments. That's mine, you know? Thank you, Councilman and Mayor, for serving, and thank the police department for serving us and saving people's lives. Murdering people, black, brown, whatever? It's kind of funny how they got murdered when they were doing something that was against the law. You know, I don't get it. Anyway, that's it. I'm done. Thank you so much for listening. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Gino Martini. Thank you very much.
The next public comment is from seven seven five seven four two seven nine zero six.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, give your name for the record, please.
My name is Olivia Piccarelli. I'm calling, I'm in front of Sparks City Hall right now with some wonderful folks who are demanding justice for Makai Lee. And we have been listening and calling in, and almost every single call that you've heard today have been demanding to defund the police and to fix the system. And you still voted to give them even more money while you are cutting the school budget. It really like shows that you do not serve your constituents. You serve the white supremacist police state. You don't listen to us. You listen to the white supremacist police state. And it needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa?
The next public comment is from seven seven five, oh, that one went away, is from seven zero six nine zero five nine seven seven eight. Please state your name for the record.
Hello?
Hi. My name is May Walton. I'm also calling because I'm heartbroken about Makai Lee. I'm just, there's so much energy right now through these calls that I'm kind of shaken up, and it's hard to even say what I've been wanting to say, but I'm just heartbroken, and I've thought about it a lot, and I've thought about solutions we can take. And I was just wondering if you guys recognize that racism is a problem in Sparks? I'm just wondering where you guys even are on that? If you're even willing to say that there is a problem with racism in our city and the police force? I'm just, I'm just heartbroken. I couldn't even watch the video of Makai. But I read the article, and it was scary. It said that the police were cursing at him before they, before they met him in his car and shot him like sixty-eight times, before they stuck a dog on him, and he was suicidal. I know he's not the only one, but I just am wondering if you guys are willing to face the problem of racism in the city, which also plagues this country? It's a complicated issue, and I know it's hard, especially for white people. I'm half-white, so I understand that it's hard, but I can't ignore injustice. I'm just, I'm scared for myself and for other people. I don't trust the police, and I'm not even black or brown. I'm half-Japanese. I've been studying race and racial problems at school for the past two semesters, even though I'm pretty new to in-depth conversation about race. Racism is not like a stranger to me. Even though I'm only half-Japanese, I know there's a problem in this country. And it shows up in the worst way when we look at cases like Makai Lee, and it's not an isolated incident. And that's the scary part. I just want you to consider your humanity. And I encourage you to learn about racism. And I encourage you to reclaim your humanity and care for these people who are vulnerable.
Lisa?
Mr. Mayor, the next public comment will be from seven seven five seven four one zero eight nine, no, that person hung up. Looks like the next one is from seven seven five three four two four one five seven. Your line is open. Please state your name for the record.
Could you state your name for the record, please? Okay, Lisa?
Like, nobody is there, sir. So I have one from seven seven five seven four one zero eight nine three. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, just please state your name.
Okay. Okay, my name is Bailey Watkins. I worked previously at Fillworth Middle School, and I currently work with underserved kids all around the Sparks and Reno areas. And I'm just calling to say I am honestly horrified at the amount of money that you have funneled newly into the police, because studies have shown that funding education, funding mental health care, funding general health care, sending money into relieving the economic inequality that exists and has been exacerbated by COVID. All of those things have been shown to make communities safer, to lower crime rates. Those attack the problem at its root. Funding the police is reactive and it puts people at work. I worked with autistic students, some of which are children of color, and I am absolutely terrified that one day someone will call the police on them because they are not acting, quote-unquote, appropriately or normally, and that they will be shot and killed because the amount of people of color come by the police and the disabled people, mentally disabled people murdered by the police are staggering and horrifying. We need to be funding programs that actually keep our communities safe. And unfortunately, there unfortunately cannot be any true justice now for Makai Lee because he is already dead. But you, by funding mental health care, by funding our community, you can send the message to his mom and others who have been murdered that their kids' lives mattered, that we can do better moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Bailey. Lisa?
It looks like our next public commenter is mine to be from seven seven five two nine one three one three five. Your line is open. Please state your name for the record.
Hi. Could you state your name, please?
My name is M. Jiang. I'd also like to comment on the murder of Makai Lee by the police, the Sparks PD. I just want, I know that you guys are annoyed with all of our calls and our anger, but if you're not angry about this situation, you have no compassion. You have no empathy, and you're evil. If you're not enraged by the murder of an innocent teenager, you are evil. If you are siding by the police and giving them more money and more tools to murder people in the community, vulnerable people in the community, you are evil. So please, please have some compassion. What would you do if that was your kid? If your kid was suicidal and you went to the police for help, and then they ended up murdering your suicidal kid, what would you do? What would you do? Of course, that would never happen to any of you because you are all white, and that's something you have to understand. Racism is real, and you need to acknowledge it, as uncomfortable as it is. And funding mental health, giving more priority to helping people rather than incarcerating them and criminalizing them and murdering them should be your priority. There are two pandemics happening right now. One of them, you have say over. You can stop. And the pandemic is racism and police brutality. So please, please consider having some compassion for those vulnerable in your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the next public comment is going to be from seven seven five five three zero two nine zero six. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Shyla Summers. I'm calling as a resident of Reno and Sparks. I've lived in Sparks for half of my life and Reno for the other half. I used the Sparks Public Education System from preschool through senior year of high school. And throughout all of those years, I'm gonna say it is embarrassing the way that my peers were being failed left and right, even in a, I think, solidly middle-class neighborhood, that I was losing peers every day. Even in a, I think, solidly middle-class neighborhood, that I was losing peers every day, every day to suicide, drug abuse, gun violence, dropping out. They have been failed and they're going to continue to be failed. And I don't understand why I graduated high school eight years ago and it's still happening. Yes, we need justice for Makai Lee, but there's not, it's not going to stop. How many more Makai Lees are going to have? Where we can't rely on calling in for help for mental health because the schools aren't doing it. They don't have the funding. And yet, they still have the funding to have bike cops in the schools. There were always, always cops. And yet, there was not enough money to help people with mental health issues. So, we're doing the work. We're going to be here. We're still going to be here. We're going to keep doing the work. But are you, are you going to do your job to prevent more Makai Lees? So we don't have to come out and keep protesting for the death of a child? He was a child. He needed help. And you did not help him and you are not going to help the next Makai Lee. We are. So we need you to help us.
I won't.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, I do not show any additional public comment. There is one hand raised, but that person has already spoken for their three minutes during this time period.
Okay. Any other, uh, anybody else in the audience wish to speak at this time? See, none will bring it back to the council for comments? Comments, questions? Anybody, Lisa? Do you wanna say something?
Um, I just wasn't sure. Um, it looks like we did get one more.
Okay, go ahead, bring him up.
Um, so I have a public comment from seven, seven, five, three, four, two, four, one, five, seven. Give me just a second. Three, four, two, four, one, five, seven. Your line is open.
Okay, my name is Dennis Beth. I am calling on behalf of myself and those who have faced injustice by our own police department.
And what is your name, sir?
I have, my name is Grant McBeth. G R A N T, M C B E T H. I have grown up here my entire life. I love this city, but I think it has problems. And with that said, I'm someone who loves peace, but you cannot have peace without justice. And because you can't have peace without justice, let's consider that the only way to get this, that justice is to have a, a form of community service that emphasizes rehabilitation and de-escalation of a situation as opposed to escalation and a violence. You kind of have peace, it's just a mode of justice. And because of that, it is, I am much of a people in terms of democracy to say that we must have enough of the, of that funding into our public service, into our mental health programs, into the community programs. That's it. That's all I need to say.
Thank you, sir. Lisa.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I do have an additional public comment.
Okay.
Adrian Feemster.
Okay.
Adrian. Your line is open.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
I'm in support for justice of Makai Lee. If we don't make changes, we'll continue to fuel the fire that has gotten to the position we're in now. It is time to do the work, make tough decisions. Not everyone will like them, but change is apparent. Change is necessary. And we see that militarizing our police force is not gonna solve our problems. There was not de-escalation used. I didn't see it. So is the training there not being used? Or what's happening? But we're funding and continuously funding a problem that's gonna continue to grow until we do the work and make the changes necessary. I'm asking you all to do the hard work. Think progressively, the direction in which we're going. Systemic oppression, police brutality, racism, it's real. But times are changing, so will you? Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa.
And it looks like I have one, sir, from telephone number four, zero, five, six, five, five, six, two, five, six. Your line is open.
Hello?
Name for the record.
Uh, Dan Garner.
So what's your name?
Dan Garner.
Okay, Dan.
I just, I just wanna say, I'd like to applaud the city council and all the law enforcement for everything each and every one of you do. I think that I agree with Mayor Martini and his comments. And I think that some of the things that people are saying to you as council is appalling. And what, what I wanna ask these people is when someone breaks in your house at three in the morning, who are you going to call? We need the police. We have to have them. Yes, there are bad police. That's a small, small minority. Yes, reform is needed. Yes, I agree. And punish the bad ones severely, but don't defund the police. They are shorthanded as it is. They're, they're outnumbered and they don't need things to be cut out. Put more money in the police for the reform, for training, not taking their money out of the police, uh, out of anything. Again, thank you to the law enforcement officers for everything they do. Thank you to all the city council. You're very much appreciated and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Dan. Lisa.
That is all I am showing currently, sir.
Okay, let's bring it back to the council then. Close the public comment period. Uh, comments from the council. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I just wanna say, and I know we heard a lot of things today. And I, when I got in office, what I saw before I got here and what I think we'll continue to try to do, and I know our police, I do stand with our police very much so, and I have no equivocation on that. But it does not mean that we won't continue to do better. And I can tell you, our own chief, I love the things that he is working on. Uh, I think we'll continue to work closer and listening and doing all those things. I am, I, I like, the one thing I wanna point that, uh, to people, that there's gonna be a time where we can have more conversations. And I say that, I think that's an important part. And we talked, uh, with the chief about the idea of that, of having some town hall type stuff. And so some of those things are coming. And so, um, this is a place and a forum for people to come share, though. So I do thank people for sharing. I do hope that truly, as much as we're listening, that everyone is listening. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments? You know, I have a comment, um, on all this discussion we're having about the police and murder. I hate the term that they're using, murdered. We don't murder anyone. Um, our number one priority in the city of Sparks is public safety. I will not defund our police department. If I could add police officers, I would. Uh, people wanna know, how come they can't get a police officer to their house within a certain amount of time? It's because we only have seven on shift at any one time. I think the bottom line is, if a police officer pulls you over, follow his instructions. If you pull a gun on a police officer, expect repercussions, wha- whatever that might be. I stand behind our police department. I stand behind the chief and everybody that works there. Um, I'm proud of them. Thank you. Questions, comments?
There.
Ms. Bybee.
Um, yeah, I, I would just like to make a couple of comments. Um, public comment is important. Uh, we need to hear from our residents, uh, in the six years I've been here. Uh, whether we agree with every res, every public comment or not is beside the point. The fact that we live in a free country and we are allowed to come out and make that kind of public comment uh, is critically important. Um, I realize that from my airline career where I flew to a lot of communist countries and saw where there wasn't freedom. So our freedoms are important here. With regards to the comments today, I couldn't agree more on the mental health challenge this community is facing, this country is facing. And mental health is a huge issue that is not funded the way it needs to be funded. And the repercussions occur across the board to our communities and our families and our businesses. And mental health is something that we need to dive down and do better on. Mental health is social services. In Washoe County, the cities of Reno and Sparks are not social service providers. So as much of our budget that goes to all of the other public safety first for all of our other services, social services, your tax dollars that you pay for in Sparks, go directly to Washoe County. And Washoe County is responsible for all of the social and human services because your tax dollars go there to pay for that, which is more, makes more sense than having three different entities. We do it as a county. So I, I do support, um, improvements and working on the, the social, you know, the social services and mental health issues. I think the most program that Sparks Police is involved with, as long as, as well as Reno and Washoe County, has helped in recent years. But to all of you out there who are calling for mental health, I agree with you. And it's something that working together with the county, mental health services, uh, hopefully we can make, uh, make a difference in our community for that. School funding is not, i- is not our responsibility or even our ability to, to, to do anything with what happens with school funding strictly through the school district and the Department of Education and the state. So school, schools and what we do there are important because we're a community. So I'm not saying it's not our responsibility on these things. I'm saying we can work together as a community, uh, across the board. But just wanted to kind of clarify what we as a city council can actually do in those areas. We can as a community and working on boards and commissions we're on, but as a council and a city budget, these are things that are not within our budget or ability to fund. So I just wanted to make that point. Um, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments? Uh, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, actually, just wanted to make two comments. One, um, the comments that were being said about the approval of the grant, that is not money that's coming out of the city, of any of our funds, that that's money being provided to us. And I wanna make sure that the, the people that are commenting on this realize that majority of those funds are actually going to our fire department, covering their expenses. Um, everyone was saying we should have, we should have sent it somewhere else that shouldn't have gone to police. But I just wanna make sure they understand that a lot of that money is going to our fire department, not just the police department. Um, and then the other thing, uh, several people commented on the most workers. I'll tell you what, those that aren't familiar with the program, it's a mobile outreach safety team, um, is put on by Washoe County. It's an incredible team that does incredible work. Unfortunately, they're a very small team and they can't be everywhere all the time. And that's the sad part of it. Um, the people that are involved in this, the clinicians that are working in that program are marvelous people that wanna do wonderful things for our community and they do. Um, they routinely ride along with Sparks PD as well as Washoe and, and Reno, but they can't be everywhere all the time. There aren't enough of them. But I encourage those that are passionate about what's happening and passionate about getting mental health assistance out in the streets, please talk to your legislators because they're the ones that are gonna help us to fund the most program and make sure that we have more of them on the street to meet the needs of the police officers that really do want them to be there with them, helping them in these situations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any other comments? Okay, I wanna thank everybody, including the people outside, for their public comment. Uh, good meeting. Thanks for, um, thanks for saying your true feelings. I appreciate that. With that objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.
You.